And welcome to the first regular city commission meeting for the city of Ormond Beach. It's February 1st, 2022, right directly at 7:00 PM and we are in the commission, commission chambers. I hope you felt welcome this evening as you came in. Our finance director, Kelly McGuire, and our economic development director, Brian Rodmacher, were the greeters tonight. And so I'm happy to call the meeting to order tonight and introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you. To my right, your left, is our recording secretary, Taylor Lockard, our city clerk, Susan Daederich, commissioner from Zone 1, Dwight Selby. Good evening, everybody. And to my left, your right, our deputy mayor and Zone 2 Commissioner, Susan Persis.
Good evening, everybody.
Our Zone 4 Commissioner, Rob Littleton, our city manager, Joyce Shanahan, city attorney, Randy Hayes. And then way to my left and way to your right, we have our chiefs with us, Chief Godfrey from the Ormond Beach Police Department, and Chief Severs for a little bit longer from the Ormond Beach Fire Department. And you'll hear more about that a little later probably. And for those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington. At this time, if you would please silence your cell phones, make sure that they're turned off, and rise for the invocation given by Pastor John Gill from Tomoka United Methodist Church. That will be followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Could you pray with me? By the name of God, let me first say thank you on behalf of all those who are gathered here this evening. We thank you for the many ways you have blessed us. We thank you for life itself and the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings for providing for our needs and for good friends. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of serving this community. In the scriptures, you said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities. Since you have established those very authorities, promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of our city officials, and in particular for this assembled commission. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amidst the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and the true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and what is right, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives, and joy in their labors. I also pray for the agenda set before them this evening. Please give them wisdom so that the decision that they make would be pleasing to you and benefit those who live and work in our beloved city of Ormond Beach. In your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, it's an honor to call up Ed Fuller, who does a lot in our community for different causes, but he's also a huge supporter of law enforcement. And he's a board member for the Crime Stoppers of Northeast Florida, and he has an award to present this evening. Mr. Fuller.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor. My name is Ed Fuller, and it is an honor and privilege indeed to be here tonight. And I would just want to recognize some of our board members that are here, if you don't mind briefly. We have Evelyn Robestini, Allison Lentz, our executive director, and Lieutenant Willis from the Ormond, you all know her, I'm sure. I want you all to use your imagination, a night on psychotropic drugs tonight, to imagine we're at the Ocean Center, and there's 365 of our colleagues, friends, dignitaries, elected officials, and police officers. And it is a night that is the most important night for our Crime Stoppers organization because we recognize the best of the best. And you have the best of the best we're going to honor here tonight. It is a distinct pleasure, privilege, and honor to be here, to even mention this gentleman's name. It's also a privilege that his wife and children are here to witness their dad's award tonight. I don't want to go on and on about this because it's not about me, it's about Detective Garcia. It's all about him. And before I relinquish this podium, I want to thank you. Chief, thank you for having the dedicated perseverance, likable, personable, professional individual in Detective Garcia. That's what makes our city great. That's what it's all about. And you won't see his name on the billboard, he's not that type of person. But tonight, like I said, we're at the Ocean Center. If you can imagine, in bright lights, this is his night, and this is the night that he needs to be recognized for an outstanding job as a police officer. So I want to relinquish the microphone to Chief Godfrey, if I would may. Chief, you can certainly talk about Detective Garcia. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Jesse Godfrey, your chief. And to the crowd, thank you for everybody for showing up. I just want to say that Detective Garcia, we're proud of you. I know your family's proud of you, and your coworkers are proud of you, and you make us all look good, and you're shining tonight, and I don't want to take any of your shine away, so are you going to present the award, sir?
Chief, you are ranking, but I'd like our other board members to come up, and I'd like Detective Garcia to come up with his lovely wife Amanda and his two beautiful children, Jason and Jackson and Dylan. There is one more award. You have, in waiting, we will send it to you, sir, a donated by the Florida Gun Exchange, a Smith &amp; Wesson M&amp;T Shield Plus 9mm pistol. And may it protect you and guide you, and God bless you. Thank you very much. Detective Garcia, would you like to say something?
No, I just want to thank everybody who came out of the water here. Thank you for being here. Thank you for taking this opportunity. Thank you.
You give me a microphone, it's a bad idea. Can you all please stand, please? Can you give me a standing ovation? Let's hear it, all of you. I can tell from Niagara County, you did well. Thank you very much. God bless you. Thank you.
Now we move to audience remarks, and we'll start with Debbie Prepp Forrester.
Happy February to everybody. My name is Debbie Prepp Forrester, commander of Ormond Strong, member of Volusia County Veterans Council, proud military spouse, sister and aunt to two veteran law enforcement officers. Military veterans, first responders, and active duty military are the first to serve, last to be served. It is the mission of our organization, Ormond Strong, to build awareness and support for these selfless and amazing heroes that put their lives on line for us every day. I'm here to invite you, our city council, to attend our fifth annual J.J. Martin Military Veteran First Responder Family Appreciation Day event, to be held this year at the Fred Costello Amphitheater, Rockefeller Gardens, Saturday, February 26, noon to 1600. That's four o'clock. The community is not only invited, but encouraged to participate in this event. It is on this day we will honor those who served, those who have served, and those who have made the ultimate sacrifice. Present will be the Traveling Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall, as well as the Global War on Terrorism Wall. The Global War on Terrorism Wall holds names of our fallen soldiers who died in battle following September 11. Both walls will be escorted to the gardens at approximately 8:00. Citizens are encouraged to bring a flag and line the entrance of the venue as the walls are escorted in. The Hero Mobile will make its way across the country to participate in this event. In addition, there will be the Fourth Annual J.J. Martin Leadership Awards, 30 resource vendors, food trucks, face painting, a prize wheel, live music, and much, much more. In closing, I thank each of you for your time. To any military veteran or first responder sitting on the dais or in this room today, on behalf of a grateful nation, thank you. On behalf of our veterans, we salute you. And from my heart, I love you. Ormond Strong.
Thank you, Debbie. And Jim Duncan.
I am Pastor Jim Duncan. My father is Reverend Reverend Harrison, and my mother, Bessie Duncan. Most of you are quite familiar with our, what I call our homestead property, which is, in fact, probably anyone in the room here has been by it if they've ever gone down to Kings Road. It's the last property at the end, on the left, and it's been quite an eyesore for a long time. It's been very distressing to other members of my extended family. We would have gladly cleaned it up at any point if we had been able to, but unfortunately, my youngest brother, Paul, had gained control of the property illegally. And I warned you, Commission, and all of you leaders, a couple of years ago, that you should not be doing business with him because he was mentally unstable. In fact, you had to know that because your police department vapor acted him just shortly before I wrote that letter. And he went downhill from there to the point where he was in a nursing home in the land. And two of your attorneys came into that nursing home, put him basically on his deathbed, and got him to sign the property over, which you did buy. And of course, it's still an eyesore, but it's a... Listen, I love Ormond Beach. I grew up in Ormond Beach. My parents were active in ministry the whole time that we lived here. My father was chaplain of the Ormond Hotel for 35 years. I graduated from Corbin Avenue during high, not just Corbin Avenue School at the time when it was a, when it still had 7th and 8th grade. And I would love to continue to support Ormond Beach. This, I've been coming to these meetings for a few weeks, and I've been very impressed with the way you conduct your meetings, the way you honor those that have served. I'm a veteran myself. My father was in the US Navy for 11 years, and I was in the Navy myself. But this is an issue that the city needs to correct. I've given you some suggestions on how to do that in the letter that I wrote, but now I'm appealing to you to do something about it. It wasn't done properly, but it can be corrected. And in fact, I know that one of your issues is you want to be able to complete the, surround the hiking trails around the lake, and there's a way to do that even if we lose ownership of the property. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next is Jim Schultz.
Jim Schultz, 117 Harvard Drive. Thank you to Ormond Strong. I used to march bridge with them a few times. My knees don't like it. I can ride on the beach in the sand, soft sand, for an hour or two. I can't do the beach. Anyways, I'd march stronger if I could march better. Anyways, what I wanted to cover was censorship, basically. Joe Rogan has been in the news. It's hard to keep him out of the news. He is weather colorful, he sounds like he's in the military, language wise occasionally, and I don't go for that. But the censorship and trying to have his platform close him down, we're going a really strange direction where First Amendment rights are going to be denied to people because some folk singers or Neil Young or who and... I mean, there should be a public debate. Censorship is never the way to solve a science issue unless you're Mr. Fauci or Bricks or some of those or, let's see, Warren, you know, Schumer. Yeah, both of them requested that the platforms for big tech actually censor, you know, not political, well, they go for political thought too. But, you know, why in the world are you going to censor science issues? Actually, Scott Atlas had some comments on that. He was in the Trump White House as a consultant medically for about five, almost five months. He said that there was never any real discussion about the science because they never wanted to look at any science. Because, he said, never once in a meeting did Fauci or Bricks ever bring any data with them. They came with a unified position of which they said they wouldn't change. And you had Atlas bring in 20 studies. Like, why? Because we're not going to listen anyways, it's already predetermined. Let's put it this way, it's not a good idea. Anyways, remdesivir, I had two loved ones that ended up with it, not by choice, the families didn't want it. It was a failure for Ebola. The only thing it was good for was destroying kidneys and livers. Still true. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. The minutes have been sent to the commission for review, also posted to the city's website. These are the minutes from the city commission meeting, regular meeting of January 18, 2022. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, and we'll show those being approved unanimously. And now we're on the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull any item off of the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'll move the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And does any commissioner wish to comment on any consent agenda item at this time? If not, we'll move to public hearings. I will open the public hearings and ask the clerk to read 8A.
Ordinance number 2022-02. An ordinance amending paragraph C, official zoning map of section 2-01, established of Article 1, establishment of zoning districts, and official zoning map of chapter 2, district and general regulations of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code, by amending the official zoning map to rezone a certain parcel of real property totaling approximately 12.00 acres located at 215 Williamson Boulevard, Volusia County, parcel number 4230-00-00-0014, from B-8 Commercial to Planned Business Development, PBD, authorizing revision of official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2022-02, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards on 8A.
I move approval of ordinance number 2022-02.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. 8B.
Ordinance number 2022-03. An ordinance authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for planned business development to be located at 215 Williamson Boulevard, to be known as the Regal Center, authorizing an out parcel along Williamson Boulevard, allowing additional uses and creating a framework for future redevelopment, establishing conditions and expirations of approval, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2022-03, read by title only.
Thank you. Again, I don't have any cards.
Mayor, I'll move ordinance 2022-03.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we will close the public hearings, move to reports, suggestions, and requests. And tonight, we start, as always, with city manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, I sent you an email last week, Commissioner, that Chief Severs is retiring, and he's leaving the city on the 24th of February. Tonight, we have with us tonight interim chief Dave King. Please stand up, Dave. We also have with us deputy chief, newly promoted deputy chief Nate Portier. Stand up. And Chief Severs, who's going to be retiring, please stand. And Tom Bizanos is retiring as our deputy chief as well. So let's give them all a hand. Thank you very much, gentlemen. I just wanted to let you know that we're having an achievement ceremony at the fire department station 92 on February 21 at 10:00 AM. I know that may be an inconvenient time for some of you, but it's that time to allow for the firefighters and their families to be present. So we want to say thank you to Chief Severs. He's done a lot for our community and our fire department, and we're very pleased with him and his accomplishments, and likewise to Tom Bizanos. This is, if you see right here, I sent you a handout of all the promotions that it kind of has a trickle-down effect. I'm really grateful that we can promote from within, certainly for deputy chief and captains and VCs, and we have an interim chief. I will tell you, Dave King is also retiring, but he has delayed his retirement for us to serve as an interim chief until we find our replacement chief. So I just want to let you all know about that. We have a couple of meetings for Cass and Park coming up. We'll have a public meeting on February 8 at 5:30, I believe. It'll be right here in 103. We'll show the three options and get the public's input and feedback on that. And then QLAB will meet, I believe it's on the 10th, and they'll provide input on the three designs. And then we'll come to the commission for your chance to provide staff with your feedback and see where we go from there on that. On March 22 is the Parks and Rec Master Plan update. That's in the final draft form, and we'll get your feedback on that. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for the city manager?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And city attorney Randy Hayes?
Need to address the Duncan matter. It's up to you.
Commission, what's your preference?
Just a cheer.
Okay. So the allegations by Mr. James Duncan are factually and legally incorrect, but the city owns the property, purchased it with the authority of the title company. We have a title policy. They warrant a good title to it. Mr. James Duncan has had issues with his brother Paul and the property for a very long time. Mr. James Duncan even sued his brother Paul, which delayed our ability to close on the property for almost two years. As part of the litigation, Mr. Duncan asserted that, Mr. James Duncan asserted that he was the rightful owner of the property. The court ruled against him and also permanently enjoined him from making any claim or assertion or interest into the property. That decision was affirmed on appeal by the Fifth District Court of Appeal. In fact, I've got a copy of it. I provided a copy to Mr. Duncan by my letter dated January 4. The city lawyers did not take documents by to Mr. Duncan to sign. The closing agent staff did that. It's my understanding that Mr. Duncan was assisted by a family member and staff at the facility, that he was alert, cognizant, and asked very good questions, and knew exactly what he was doing when he sold the property to the city. So that's the final statement on the matter, Mr. Duncan. So I will remind you again that the court ruled against you, you're permanently enjoined from making an interest or a claim to the property. I'll be happy to talk with you further if you know where to find me. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. And tonight, we start with Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you, Mayor. I first want to congratulate Mr. King on your temporary promotion, and eventually, congrats on your retirement. I want to congratulate on your retirement. Good for you. And chief, congratulations on your future endeavors. Being close to the family is always the way to go, and I'm very happy for you, and you've been wonderful for this department. I'll close with, though Detective Garcia is not here right now, I did a ride along with the detectives sometime last year with Larson, and Detective Garcia is a workhorse. I mean, he goes above and beyond, and the city of Ormond Beach and our citizens are very lucky to have him, and he's very well deserving of this award. And with that, I'll say a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Selby?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first, Chief Severs, thank you for your service to the city. You really elevated our department to a new level. You got us on track with new fire engines that we needed and new equipment, and you brought a spirit, a camaraderie, to the department that is really fantastic. And you're leaving very big shoes that will be hard for the city manager to fill, you know. But we absolutely wish you the best. My initial reaction was, oh, crap, I can't believe you're leaving, but I'm always happy for somebody when they, you know, move forward in your new career opportunity. You're going to be doing disaster, the, what do we call it? EOC? Yeah, yeah, disaster response, EOC. And that's great, and anyway, we're very happy for you. And to the entire department, for everybody else that's moving up and all these promotions, you know, in a small department like ours, that... you know, in a small department like ours, that's, this is great stuff because frequently there aren't opportunities to advance. And so, thank you for your service. You guys who are retiring or going to retire soon, because that does create room for the younger guys to move up and advance and enhance their skills. And with that, I will say good night.
Thank you, Commissioner. Deputy Mayor Persis?
Good evening again, everyone. I just, Commissioner Littleton and Commissioner Selby just said it very well about our fire chief and for all the promotions. I don't want to repeat everything, but I did want to say how valued our fire department is so much, and we appreciate so much what you do. And I know, Chief, you brought the fire department a long way. I know the guys are going to miss you, but I know you're doing the right thing, and I think you'll be very successful in your new endeavor. I just want to say thank you for being in Orman Beach and making our city shine a little brighter. And again, congratulations to all of you that got promoted. It's very exciting, very, very exciting. I also want to talk about Detective Garcia. Wow, what a great reputation, what a great man. I know he's not here now, but I just want to give my congratulations to he and his family for being noted on his great work and being, I guess, what it is, the, what I wrote it down, the fur, the, where did I write it? Oh, the Volusia County Officer of the Year. So I wanted to say that was wonderful. Also, I attended a few events in the last couple of weeks. I went to an Arbor Day tree planting at Orman Beach Elementary School. It was wonderful. A class of second graders came out, and they planted a tree. They planted, I don't know, four or five now right in the front of the school, and you can see by the year how tall they are. You can tell where the first one was planted and then the second, third, and the fourth. So it's kind of a neat thing to, you know, neat thing to watch these trees grow and how, you know, it's a great lesson to our children about how important trees are in our city and how they provide so much for our animals, for people, for everybody, and it just makes our city look great. So it was just a fun, fun event. And along with a couple of the other commissioners and the mayor, we went to the ribbon cutting for the Riverbend Nature Mountain Bike Trail, which is amazing. And if you like to ride bikes, that is the place to go. That's just an incredible trail. So we are so lucky to have it in Orman Beach, and people come from all over to ride that trail. They ride it two or three times. I think it's four point one miles long, but they ride, you know, they ride two or three times. I guess it's not enough exercise just one time, so they had to go through it again. But it's wonderful addition to our city. And we just had the Chamber annual installation of officers, and I just want to give a shout out, of course, he's not here, to the new president of the Orman Beach Chamber, Don Grindel, who is a fabulous man, wonderful family man, just a great person and is going to represent the Chamber so well. I'm just, I was just really pleased to see that he's going to be our president. And I have two more things. The first one, I have to get it on my phone. It's very, very exciting, and basically what it is, it's about Mayor Partington's daughter. Her name's CJ Partington. And something really special has just happened to her, and I have to, you can add to this, Mayor Partington, when I get finished, but I found this out. I love hearing about kids that went through Volusia County Schools right here in Orman Beach and doing something great. But CJ has been accepted into the Reading Education and Language Arts PhD program for two thousand twenty-two. She's one of only five students selected for the R2D2 Scholarship, which includes a full tuition and a yearly stipend for four years of a doctoral program. Her mentor professor will be Sonya Cabell, who is also a professor at the Florida Center for Reading Research at FSU, Go Seminoles. And she'll be working in the lab doing reading research. Her research under Dr. Cabell will focus on the prevention of reading difficulties among young children who are at risk, particularly those living in poverty, focusing on early childhood, pre-K through second grade. This is like an amazing, amazing thing. Before she's thirty years old, she'll be a doctor, so I just want to congratulate Mayor. It's just a huge honor. It's wonderful. And finally, in closing, I did want to let everyone know I am going to run for my seat again. I have filed papers and opened a campaign account, and I sure hope that the citizens, the wonderful citizens of Zone Three will elect me again. So thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And let's see, I'll start with Detective Garcia, because I've watched his career for a lot of years, and it's been amazing to see him develop into a quality sworn law enforcement officer, well-deserved. And I feel a little bad because, like Mr. Fuller was explaining, the pandemic has really put a damper on the normal celebration that we would have for our officers. Crime Stoppers puts on an amazing banquet where one officer from each city is recognized and then one ultimately out of all those for the county, for the entire Seventh Judicial Circuit, so it's Flagler, Volusia, Putnam, and St. John's. And so for Detective Garcia to win, it's just, it's an honor for him, a testament to the hard work that Commissioner Littleton mentioned, and it reflects so positively on the city of Orman Beach. So thank you, Crime Stoppers, the board, Ed Fuller, and our own victim advocate, Evelyn Robustini, that's on the board, and Ashley Lynch. They work so hard to recognize these folks. And generally, there's a write-up, Chief, you know, and City Manager Shanahan, that is done for each officer, why they were nominated, why they won. I wonder if that's something we can include maybe a little bit of in social media, because for our residents to know why he was recognized, I think would be wonderful. Chiefs, I'll go to you guys next in the fire service. You do an amazing job for our city. I've said before, police and fire, you never know when you're going to need them, but they always stand at the ready twenty-four seven. And so, I get a little emotional talking about it, but the day my childhood home exploded and burned, Dave King was there, and I was so impressed with his professionalism. He's just a solid, I mean, his strength, the way he directed the team and worked so hard to save as much of the home as they could, it made an impact on me at that time. And, you know, that's the kind of stuff that happens. Nate, you know, when I had my accident a few years ago, you showed up just to check me out, make sure that I was okay. The vehicle I was in was totaled, but the whole fire department came and took care of everybody, and that ended up being okay as well. And so these are the things that you would never think would happen to you, but they happened to all of us at some time or another. Chief, since you've been here, you've been such an amazing, positive force. I mean, everybody loves you. We hate to see you go. We hate it for us. We're excited for you because it's a wonderful opportunity closer to where your family is. So, you know, we're, I think that says it all. We're sad, but we're happy in a way that you're getting to move forward because you deserve it. The way you treated the men and women in your department, they loved you, was the impression I always got from talking to every single one of them, and so that's a wonderful legacy to leave behind. I attended the Historical Society Swearing In a couple of weeks ago, the Yacht Club Annual Dinner a couple of weeks ago. Yep, Deputy Mayor Persis was at the Historical Society as well, and then the Chamber Annual Dinner. And it just, we call it the circuit, and we all do it every year. At the beginning of the year, there's all these different annual events and swearing-in ceremonies. It's such a wonderful time. It's a busy time, but seeing how our community works so well in so many different capacities to make Orman Beach fantastic, and so I just wanted to mention those. We swore in the board at the annual dinner, tried anyway, and with the Yacht Club, I was able to do the prayer and the pledge. And the Historical Society, we swore in that board, so great people, wonderful community volunteers, community-minded, and that's a big part of what makes Orman Beach great. The Mountain Bike Trail, if you go online, you know, just on, we're on YouTube, Google the Mountain Bike Trail, Orman Beach Mountain Bike, and you can see three or four different GoPro videos of the trail. It's, the big thing that hit me about that was it was all volunteer-made, and they did it the right way. They came to the city with a plan, they got approvals, and moved forward with it. But the entire thing on the GoPro videos is so beautiful to see the trails, if you're not brave enough to get on a mountain bike and ride back there. But it's four point one, and they may add more to it at some point. And then I think there was a large donor that provided some money to help with the maintenance and things like that. So when good things start happening, sometimes good things just pile on top of it, and that was a lot of fun that morning. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Persis, for recognizing CJ's appointment to the doctoral program at FSU. I get a little emotional about that, particularly when I realize it's a full scholarship and I'm not having to, for once, for once. But Lori and I are very proud of the young lady that CJ has, is, and has become, particularly impressed with her professionalism and her love for education. Like all our daughters, we love her very much, no matter what. Deputy Mayor, I wanted to mention you and Carl both as accomplished lifelong educators have supported CJ during some challenging times in her early career, teaching at a Title One school in the Little Haiti neighborhood in Miami. And Carl was CJ's middle school principal, and I know she truly appreciates the advice and counsel and time that you both shared with her, and Lori and I do as well. So thank you so much for that. It's exciting to see CJ embark on this new career adventure, and we wish her all the success in the world. And with that, I'll say good night. We're adjourned.